I'd like to call an order of the County Commission meeting of September the 19th, 2022, the first commission meeting for our new commissioners, the first one of this term for everybody else. And we welcome all of you here tonight and thank you again for being willing to serve. I do want to take just a moment and say a few things out front. Remember now your mics are live, okay? But we do need you to pull them down and talk into them when it's time so Mr. Tommy can hear, I mean so that, uh, Mr. Tommy can hear. But just so that it does go into the mic. I'll start out a little bit in humor only if you got it. I do would like to thank Ms. Sarah Davenport for taking care of the slideshow that you see early on here. A lot of times if you're sitting and just wanting something to do, that is always a good trivia up there. Taking care of our pictures on the outside, your nameplate and the commission picture night. Again, she was very fortunate that everybody showed up at the right time and we got our picture taken. That don't always happen. In the back, you'll see along the right-hand side of the wall, we'd love to thank the Wilson County Chamber, the Lebanon Wilson County Chamber. Melanie, if you will, I know that they know you, but introduce your staff to us, please.
This is Tiffany Zell, and she is our marketing director. And we have Stephanie here who supports, Andrea, my sidekick, Bay Page, through the channel for 19 years, and Jennifer Winfrey. So, thank you all for having us tonight, and we hope you enjoy everything.
We do appreciate the food. Thank you. Thank you for all you do for us in many other ways as well. We appreciate that, and it was a good night to get everybody together early and to talk and to have some food to be able to enjoy that. But thank you. I know y'all have work to do, and I know you're on your way, but thanks for stepping in here. We have two students in the back. If you would, ladies, stand up when I call your name, and that way they'll know who I'm talking to. The first one is Paige Mast, and the second one is Audrey Green. They're from Austin Peay University. No, 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 they're from MTSU University. And they're here in order to complete a class assignment tonight where they would come to a county commission meeting. They'll film it, they'll go back and have a discussion about maybe one of your topics tonight. They're going to talk to a commissioner when it's over as well. And thank you for choosing Wilson County to come and make your assignment. So, we welcome you here. At this time, I'd like for you, if you would, to introduce to you Commissioner Marlowe for the prayer and the pledge.
I'm going to, excuse me, going to do a little bit different. That's okay, John, you can stand. A little bit different. We cite the Pledge of Allegiance every month, and I thought it would take this opportunity for us to stand and cite the Lord's Prayer for our prayer this evening. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive them the trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Say the pledge with me, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, equal and visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Marlowe. You will now please press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Got a full House, 25-0. Report from the Steering Committee. Commissioner Fields.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Steering Committee of the County Commission met in regular session on Thursday, September the 8th, 2022, in the upstairs conference room. The minutes are in your packet. I make a motion that they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Adoption of the agenda. Commissioner Fields.
The consent agenda is in your packet. If there are no changes or additions, I'll make a motion that they be received and filed.
Got a motion, a second, on adopting the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And there is no consent agenda tonight, so we will move forward, to my knowledge. I don't see any. Special recognition at this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Susan Shaw to come forth and talk about the September as a recovery month.
Thank you, Mayor Hutto, and good evening, Commissioners and members who are in attendance tonight. Drug Free Wilco is a drug prevention coalition that has a mission to prevent drug misuse, substance misuse, and addiction. And this is for youth and adults, and our goal is to use education and communication to raise awareness and awareness of resources. I have a proclamation that I would like to read to you. This is, September is National Recovery Month, and we celebrate those in recovery. This is a proclamation, National Recovery Month, September 2022. Whereas mental health and substance use disorders affect all communities nationwide, with commitment and support, those impacted can embark on a journey of improved health and overall wellness. The focus of Recovery Month each September is to celebrate all people that make the journey of recovery possible by embracing the tagline, "Recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community." And whereas the opioid crisis has had a devastating impact on Wilson County residents, with 79 deaths from overdose in 2020, the majority being from opioids. And whereas, with commitment and support from community, family, healthcare treatment, and the faith-based community, our residents can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. And whereas, through Recovery Month, people become more aware of the signs of mental health and substance use disorders, and encourage people in need of recovery services to seek help. And whereas, we recognize the efforts by Drug Free Wilco, its coalition members, and its youth division, YPC Wilco, toward treatment and recovery, helping to break the stigma associated with substance misuse. And whereas, the Recovery Month observance continues to work to improve the lives of those affected by mental health and substance use disorders by raising awareness and educating communities about the effective services that are available. For the above reasons, I am asking the citizens of Wilson County to join me in celebrating this September as Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, Randall Hutto, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as Recovery Month in Wilson County, and call upon our community to observe this month with compelling programs and events that support this year's observance. Given under my hand this third day of September 2022, Randall Hutto, Wilson County Mayor. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you, Ms. Susan, for doing that. I would like to just, I know that many of you know Susan, but Susan is definitely a plus to our office. Things like Drug Free Wilco, which does make a difference here in our county. We do lots of resolutions in here, but there is other war fronts that we have that we need to tackle and that we're concerned about, and Drug Free Wilco has really answered the call on that, and that really, in large and part, has been birthed by Susan and many others of you in here. And so, I appreciate your support for that. Kristy Willie is also with us in the back now. If you hadn't had a chance to meet her, she is also another asset to our office that does several different things. And so, please, if you get a chance to get to know both of these ladies, if you don't already. At this time, we will hold a public hearing tonight to consider a rezoning request. I'll ask Mr. Tom to come forward, and I'll need a motion to go out of session.
We'll move.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. We are out of session, and Mr. Tom, the floor is yours. Mr. Tom, his yours is our Wilson County Planner.
Good evening to everyone. I might just take just a moment of housekeeping. There should be a thumb drive at each of your desks if you're a county commissioner. That thumb drive was prepared by my office staff. It should include a copy, a current copy, at least up until this evening, of the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, and...
I don't think anybody...
You don't have a thumb drive?
No.
Huh.
I bet just the new commissioners got them, sir.
Okay, maybe it was the new commissioners. I apologize. If the old commissioners would like them, we can certainly get you a copy of the thumb drive with up-to-date information.
You're talking about Diane? You're talking about Diane?
Well, I do apologize about that. I apologize for the oversight, but I will be happy to get that for you. And if anyone would like a hard copy, we just didn't want to kill a bunch of trees, because these, as you can see, this is just one of the documents. It's a zoning ordinance, so. But anyways, I look forward to working with all of you, old and new, and I'm excited to see what the future holds with all of you. So, with that, I will start with the public hearings. I do have two public hearings, and they're a little bit different from each other. One of them's a rezoning, and one of them is an amendment to the zoning regulations. So, I'll start with the rezoning or master plan amendment first. A public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, September 19th, 2022, at 7:00 PM or thereafter in the County Commission Room of the Wilson County Courthouse, located here at 228 East Main Street in Lebanon, Tennessee. Following item is up for consideration. Application has been made by Mark McDonald to amend the Garvin Retail Commercial Planned Unit Development from the existing uses of gas and quick-service retail, quick-service retail and restaurant, hotel and retail commercial, to a use matrix that includes quick-service retail, retail, commercial, restaurants, sit-down and drive-thru, hotels, offices, gas stations, truck and maintenance, and parking and warehouse distribution. The zoning will remain C4 Plan Commercial. The property is located at 645 Couchville Pike and Aldi Boulevard. It's at the corner of Couchville Pike and Aldi Boulevard, and contains approximately 13.91 acres, and is referenced as Wilson County Property Map 138, parcel 39.06. A copy of this request has been on file in the Wilson County Courthouse here in the basement, and anyone wishing to come to speak is requested to come forward at this time, if there's anyone wishing to speak at the public hearing.
Here tonight, would like to speak on this situation. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one here, we will close public comment period, and I will ask a motion to you.
I've got another public hearing.
Okay. Okay. All right, go ahead.
The next item we have is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, and again, a public hearing will be held here at 7:00 PM or thereafter. This consists of an amendment to the Wilson County zoning ordinance as follows. Under Article 3, General Provisions, Section 3.50, Off-Street Parking Requirements, subsection 350.02, number of parking spaces required, make the following changes or additions to be added in alphabetical order. Where we, and basically what it's saying is, warehousing, distribution, light manufacturing, and assembly, and office facilities above 25,000 square feet in size shall use the following parking criterion, due to the speculative nature of such large facilities that may be used differently by different tenants. One space per 750 square feet of gross floor area when the building is 25,000 square feet to 100,000 square feet. One parking space per thousand square feet of gross floor area when the building is 101 square feet to 200,000 square feet. Or one space per 1,250 square feet of gross floor area when the building is 201 square feet or larger. And again, a copy of this request has been on file. Anyone requesting to come and comment about this, or have questions about it, is what requests to come forward at this time.
Anyone in the audience wants to speak on this issue? If not, we will close public comment period now, and ask a motion to go back into session.
We'll move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Mr. Tom?
Okay. The first item that we'll take up is the application for rezoning or master plan amendment. And again, this was made, application was made by Mark McDonald to amend the Garvin Retail Commercial PUD from the existing uses of gas and quick-service retail, quick-service retail, restaurant, hotel and retail commercial, from that to quick-service retail, retail, commercial, restaurant, both sit-down and/or drive-thru, hotels, offices, gas stations, and finally, truck maintenance and parking, and warehouse and distribution. The zoning is not proposed to change, but the master plan list of uses and conceptual plan for the property is proposed to change. You should have a copy of that master plan in your file or on your desk. And briefly, I can open up, I believe they were going to try to put it up on the screen as well, but I don't see that right now. You do have the topographic survey that's required for all rezonings as the first page, as a second page behind the cover page. You then have the existing master plan that was passed, I believe, in 2006, that shows the different listing of uses at the bottom middle of the page that was approved at that time. And then you have the proposed revision in concept, which indicates that at least in concept, they're proposing to keep the quick-service retail, gas stations, and restaurants and such along the frontage of Couchville Pike. However, when they turned down Aldi Boulevard, they're looking for something that's a little bit more similar to the uses that fall behind it on Aldi Boulevard to the south, which are more warehousing, distribution, truck parking.
What staff recommendation?
I recommend, well, our recommendation was for approval, and the Planning Commission's recommendation, which is what you must consider, was for approval.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman. Go to Commissioner Hobbs, this is his district.
I'm approving District 13.
I got a motion to hear a second.
Second.
Commissioner Glover?
That's what I was going to ask, is, was the recommendation?
Okay. Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, this appears to be a larger piece of land for the modified. Is that true, or is that just a...
No, I think that's just different scale.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions on this property before we vote on it? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Let the record reflect it was unanimous. Tom?
The next item is an amendment to the zoning regulations. This comes about because of repeated requests by the large-scale distribution facilities we are getting, for instance, down in the Couchville Pike area. Many times, you're getting anywhere from 400,000 to even 800,000 square foot buildings. Our current industrial parking requirement, which is the closest thing we have to accommodate it to in the parking section of the zoning ordinance, would require one parking space per 500 square feet, which if you just do that on a 400,000 square foot building, that's 800 spaces. You're talking major shopping plaza, parking levels there for something that may or may not have that amount of staffing or traffic. And this is not inclusive of their freight truck, freight truck parking. So, what has been happening since, really since I got here, because that parking standard had not changed, it had not accommodated or accounted for such large-scale buildings when the zoning ordinance was envisioned, they routinely went to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and for a number of years, the Board of Zoning Appeals was willing to grant variances using what's called an ITE standard, which is Institute of Transportation Engineers standard. In a couple of situations, because the buildings are speculative for warehousing and distribution, the new ITE standard that was being relied upon may have made all the sense in the world, but then when, if one of the buildings got used for light manufacturing instead, you may have actual full staffs of people coming in 24/7, three shifts. And in a couple of those situations, it caused a little bit of a parking issue in a couple of the developments down there. So, after several years of kind of dealing with this and wrestling with it, it was determined by staff that it was probably a good time to go on and try to, try to address it. So, this is our attempt at addressing it. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this. It's a somewhat proportionate parking standard that is less parking than what's currently required, so you don't get kind of the high numbers or extreme numbers of parking spaces required. But it's a little bit more, in my opinion, than what probably the ITE standard would have called for.
This is across the county, right?
This is for any industrial establishment or warehousing and distribution establishment that's above 25,000 square feet in size.
All move.
Got a motion, a second. Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, even though this is a standard you want to pass, they can come in again to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Anybody's welcome to come to the Board of Zoning Appeals if they're agreed by any section of the zoning ordinance or administration of it. However, judging the future by the past, what, I believe the board already has kind of gotten to where they're a little bit more remiss about, or reticent about passing variances. And I think once this passed, at least for the foreseeable short-term, short to midterm future, I think you'll find the Board of Zoning Appeals bill every bit as reticent about giving variances in light of this new kind of compromise.
Any other questions? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Let the record reflect it was unanimous. Also, Commissioner Marlowe, this was, this was resolutions 22-9-14 of tonight, so that one's been done. Okay? 22-9-14. Thank you, Mr. Tom.
I look forward to working with each of you. My office is in the basement, room 5, if you ever need to call.
Thank you, sir. Report from Minutes Committee. Commissioner Fields?
The Minutes Committee, excuse me. The Minutes Committee met in regular session on Thursday, September the 18th, in the upstairs conference room at the courthouse. The minutes are in your packet. I've moved that they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Reading of the minutes?
Move to dispense the reading of the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
This time, I'd like for Mr. Scott McCarver with Vanderbilt Wilson Hospital. He wants to address you just for a few minutes and give you an update on our hospital here in Wilson County. As he coming forward, I will tell you that we'll have two things in front of you next month concerning roads. One of them is the description of the Mount Jewett Road from Central Pike, State Route 265, to Providence Way. As one ordinance, it has to go before Mr. Murphy next month at the Road Commission. That's why I didn't bring it this month to get approval from them, but no money coming out of your pocket, but these are things that the state sends to me about projects that they're doing, and wants to make sure you're aware that they are doing those, and they ask for cooperation and approval from the Road Commission. So, we'll do that next month, and if you approve that, then we'll bring it here. The other one is also from Terrence Hill Road to Alden's Gardens Road. Better for you to know of, it's a widening in front of West Wilson Elementary School, which is long awaited. So, both of those projects will be here before you next month, but I just wanted you to know that they're already on their way, and they'll go to the Road Commission at the start of the month of October. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm Scott McCarver, and I'm the president of Vanderbilt Wilson County Hospital. Vanderbilt acquired the hospital here in Lebanon in August of 2019, so we just had our three-year anniversary, and I just want to share with you guys that we remain committed to this community. Since acquisition, we have invested over $35 million into the facility, and we've added over 200 jobs in the hospital as well. Some of that investment has gone to bringing the Vanderbilt Ingram Cancer Center out here to Lebanon. I think that's a huge asset to our community here. And more recently, we've added more services to the hospital. So, in March, we started Interventional Cardiology. So, what does that mean? That means if you're having a heart attack here in Wilson County, you can come to our hospital. You don't have to go to town. We got Level 3 trauma status in June. So, that's sort of your basic breaks and strains, sprains. So, if you have those types of things, you can come to our emergency room. We'll take care of you. If it's more significant, we can get you downtown if you need that. And then, starting next month, we're going to have inpatient neurology in our hospital, which has been a gap in this community for a really long time. So, I just wanted to come tonight and say thank you all for your service to our community. We continue to be committed to this community, and if any of you ever want to talk about the hospital, feel free to just reach out to me. I'd be happy to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarver. Appreciate what you do and your investment in Wilson County. Also, I think it helps Director Cooper to have, to not have to travel to Nashville when we have patients here, which is a plus on both ways. When they travel to Nashville, it keeps them tied up for quite some time, and we don't have that ambulance available here in Wilson County. So, thank you for what you're doing there. I will say this too. They needed a guinea pig to drive up one morning and said that they were having a heart attack, and so I was that guy. And I drove up, got out, and they put me through the whole procedure. Carried me to the back, put stuff on my chest, and all that. They were impressed by my chest, by the way. And, but, but they carried me through the whole procedure, carried me down to the trauma part, then put me in the lifeline, and actually flew me up and flew me around and brought me back. But it was definitely an eye-opening for me to know we have, and I'm glad I got to do it, because now I can at least talk about the hospital that we have here. So, thank you for what you do.
He was a good sport. He even let us shave his chest. He was a good sport.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Hadn't billed me yet, no. Last thing I'll need to add is that we will be reappointing Ms. Karen Dedman to the Parks Recreation Advisory Board. That's just to get that in the minutes, nothing for you to vote on. Elections and appointments, Mr. Goodall, anybody to be added to the list?
Agreed.
Do I hear a motion to approve of notary list?
Move to approve.
Just, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? This time, you are to elect a commission chairperson for the commission for the next 12 months, and the floor is open for nominations.
Nominate Randall Hutto. Second.
Any other nominations?
Move nomination cease. Second.
Commissioner Weathers?
Nomination cease. He beat you.
Okay. Well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you for allowing me to serve you. I enjoy doing this, and it is my privilege to lay out as much facts as I can. I know the power rests with you, and I try to give you as much information as I can to be sure that you can make the best decision possible. So, thanks for you allowing me to be a part of this process on the third Monday of each month. At this time, I would like to consider the commission pro tem. Commissioner Jones?
Run for Marlowe.
Second.
And Commissioner Weathers?
Time to fuck out of town, but that's good. Move the nomination cease.
Second.
Got a motion for Commissioner Marlowe to be chairman pro tem, and a second. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The record reflects unanimous, and Commissioner Marlowe, will you serve as pro tem?
Yes, sir.
At this time, we will have the selection of the Budget Committee. And on the Budget Committee, you will vote for four people. We'll open the floor for nominations first. If we have just four to be nominated, that makes it pretty simple. If we have six or seven, then you'll vote for four of the six or seven. It takes 13 votes for a person to be elected. We'll go through the first round, and if we don't have four with 13, then we will knock off the lowest number and revote. Have I left anything out, Mike?
It's you.
Okay. So, at this time, I'm going to open the floor up for nominations for Budget Committee, and I've got several in the hopper, so I will go down the route here. Commissioner Dow?
I nominate Mike Kurtz.
Commissioner Kurtz. Commissioner McFarland?
Run for Marlowe.
Commissioner Marlowe. Commissioner Costley?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Jones, Tommy Jones.
Mr. Jones. Commissioner Franklin?
I'd like to nominate Diane Weathers.
Commissioner Weathers?
Oop.
Commissioner Bernard?
I was going to nominate Diane. I'm good.
Commissioner Weathers?
I'm going to nominate Justin Smith.
Commissioner Smith. And Commissioner McFarland?
Move nomination cease.
I got a motion, a second, for nomination to cease. There's nobody else in the hopper to be called on. I have five people for you to vote on, four of them. This time, we'll ask the pro tem to come and help and pass out the ballots. Again, remember, you must sign your ballot and put your district on it for it to count. You will vote for four people, and your options are Commissioner Kurtz, Commissioner Marlowe, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Weathers, and Commissioner Smith. I will say them again, once you get that. I forgot anything. So, you will vote for four people. You have the options of Commissioner Kurtz, Commissioner Marlowe, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Weathers, and Commissioner Smith. Please sign your ballot and put your district on it, please. We vote secret ballot, as we always do, so nobody will know who you voted for until after the meeting. But after the meeting, all votes are public, just so that secret ballot is the way we go during the, during the commission, but afterwards, everybody knows so that it will not be secret. You will pass your ballots to the center aisle, and then Commissioner Marlowe will be by to pick them up and bring them to Ms. Doughty. You have four votes out of five choices, Commissioner Kurtz, Commissioner Marlowe, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Weathers, and Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Keith, just getting me back for being late tonight.
Still, he's got a card out trying to find his name.
And I voted for him.
All ballots are in.
Kurtz, Jones, Weathers, Smith. Weathers, Marlowe, Jones, Smith. Marlowe, Smith, Jones, Weathers. Jones, Weathers, Marlowe, Smith. Jones, Marlowe, Weathers, Smith. Marlowe, Jones, Smith, Weathers. Marlowe, Weathers, Kurtz, Jones. Smith, Weathers, Marlowe, Jones. Weathers, Jones, Marlowe, Smith. Marlowe, Weathers, Jones, Kurtz. Kurtz, Marlowe, Jones, Smith. Jones, Marlowe, Kurtz, Weathers. Weathers, Jones, Smith. Okay, no vote. Just got three on that one. Jones, Weather, Smith, Marlowe. Got it. Weathers, Kurtz, Marlowe, Jones. Weathers, Kurtz, Smith, Jones. Kurtz, Jones, Marlowe, Weathers. Marlowe, Weathers, Smith, Jones. Kurtz, Marlowe, Weathers, Smith. Marlowe, Smith, Weathers, Kurtz.
So the Budget Committee would be Commissioner Marlowe, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Weathers, and Commissioner Smith will be our four members of the Budget Committee. Congratulations, and thank you for serving. We'll move forward now with the Finance Committee. We have four members now for you to nominate for the Finance Committee, and the lights are up, and so Commissioner Hall?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Kevin Costley.
Commissioner Costley. Commissioner Marlowe.
Commissioner Breeze.
Commissioner Breeze. Commissioner Rich? Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner John Gentry.
Mr. Gentry. Commissioner Weathers?
I'd like to nominate Robert Fields.
Commissioner Fields. Commissioner Franklin?
I was going to nominate Fields.
Any other nominations here? Do you hear a motion nomination cease?
Move.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So you have four members now to vote for out of five. The options are Commissioner Costley, Commissioner Breeze, Commissioner Bowman, Commissioner Gentry, and Commissioner Fields. You will vote for four. I do need you to sign it and put your district on there, please, or it will not count. You need to vote for four out of five. Commissioner Costley, Commissioner Breeze, Commissioner Bowman, Commissioner Gentry, and Your options are Commissioner Costley, Commissioner Breeze, Commissioner Bowman, Commissioner Gentry, and Commissioner Fields. Need to vote for four. Please sign your ballot and put the district on there, please. Your options are Commissioner Costley, Commissioner Breeze, Commissioner Bowman, Commissioner Gentry, and Commissioner Fields. Once you have voted, please pass them to the center aisle, and Ms. Doughty will pick All ballots are in.
Y'all ready, Rock, Roll? Bowman, Fields, Costley, Gentry. Breeze, Fields, Costley, Bowman. Costley, Bowman, Gentry, Fields. Costley, Breeze, Gentry, Fields. Bowman, Gentry, Fields, Costley. Costley, Gentry, Fields, Bowman. Costley, Breeze, Fields, Bowman. Breeze, Gentry, Fields, Costley. Breeze, Fields, Gentry, Bowman. Gentry, Fields, Bowman, Costley. Fields, Bowman. Gentry. What's that? Breeze. Breeze. Right like me. Fields, Gentry, Bowman, Costley. Gentry, Fields, Costley, Bowman. Fields, Gentry, Breeze, Costley. Costley, Fields, Breeze, Bowman. Costley, Breeze, Gentry, Bowman. Costley, Gentry, Fields, Breeze. Costley, Breeze, Fields, Gentry. Breeze, Bowman, Gentry, Fields. Breeze, Costley, Gentry, Fields. Bowman, Breeze, Gentry, Fields. Fields, Gentry, Bowman, Breeze.
Hang on a minute, read that last again.
The last one again.
Yes, sir. Sorry. Is that all of them? Finance Committee would be Commissioner Costley, Commissioner Bowman, Commissioner Gentry, and Commissioner Fields. Thank you for being willing to serve. This time, we have Ethics Committees. You are to confirm my appointment of five members to serve a one-year term on the Ethics Committee. Upon your confirmation, I'd like to appoint Commissioners Jeremy Rich, Commissioner Jeremy Hobbs, Commissioners Rick Brown, Commissioners Chris Dow, along with Mr. Earl Ray.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Animal Control, you are to confirm my appointment of five members to serve a two-year term on the Animal Control Committee. Upon your confirmation, I would like to appoint Commissioner Wyndham Marlowe, Commissioner William Glover, Commissioner Lauren Breeze, along with Ms. Nancy Andrews and Dr. Chris McAtier.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Audit Committee members, you are to confirm my appointment of one member to serve on the Audit Committee for one-year term. Upon your confirmation, I'd like to appoint Commissioner Rusty Keith.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now we're ready to vote for Insurance Committee. There are five members to serve. Election of five members or four?
Five.
Election of five members to serve on the Insurance Committee. We will follow the same process there, the Insurance Committee, if you remember, are to be elected to serve all four years of the term, as opposed to Budget and Finance that serve a one-year term. And so at this point, I will open the floor up for Insurance Committee members. My screen is gone. It's up now. Commissioner Weathers?
I want to nominate Commissioner Mike Kurtz.
Commissioner Kurtz and Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner John Gentry.
Mr. Gentry. Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Gary McFarland.
Commissioner McFarland. Commissioner Marlowe?
I'd nominate Commissioner Evans.
Commissioner Evans. Are there any other nominations on the Insurance Committee?
One more.
Did one more. It'll do.
Don't everybody run?
Commissioner Jones?
Diane Weathers.
Commissioner Weathers, by acclamation?
Move nomination cease.
Second. Any other discussion? Any other nominations, any other discussions? Hearing none, are you ready to vote? On these four, by acclamation, all in favor, five, my bad, it's four on my cheat sheet here. There are five, Commissioner Kurtz, Commissioner Gentry, Commissioner McFarland, Commissioner Evans, and Commissioner Weathers would be your, would be your Insurance Committee for the next four years. Do I hear any other nominations, last time?
I have five.
Can I just, can we do all in favor say aye?
Yeah.
That's right, so I'm saying, yeah.
You better vote for that boy.
Yeah.
We'd scratch to get five.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Let the record reflect it, it's unanimous. Thank you for serving, and you too, Commissioner Weathers. It is a tough committee. I will, I will applaud, I know Commissioner Rich is in the back, been here many years, worked on the Insurance Committee. Commissioner Ash was the chair for quite some time of serving the last little bit for us, and Insurance Committee is a very important committee, and it's a volatile committee because we never know when we're going to have claims, and so I do appreciate you being willing to serve on that committee for us, please. Public Works Record, Public Records Commission? One member here to Public Works Record, Public Records Commission, one member here to confirm my appointment on the Public Records Commission. I'd like to appoint Commissioner Haskell Evans. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Now we are to elect a Road Commissioner for Zone Four. This will serve, the following individual are eligible to serve, and will serve now until July of 2025 for the vacancy of the former Commissioner in that area, which she chose not to run this year, and that's Commissioner Sonia Robinson. The options are, for Zone Four, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Franklin, Commissioner Gentry, Commissioner Hobbs, Commissioner Jones, and Commissioner Weathers. Those are the options that you have to vote. I'm looking for nominations, and I see Commissioner Weathers.
I nominate Bobby Franklin.
Commissioner Franklin.
Diane Weathers, Ms. Chairman.
Sir.
Diane Weathers.
Commissioner Weathers. She's on the Budget Committee. Any other nominations for Zone Four out of the six people that I gave you? Any other discussion? All in favor for Commissioner Franklin being on the road zone, Zone Four, follow by saying aye. And opposed? Let the record reflect it was unanimous. Congratulations, Commissioner Franklin. Okay. I believe that's got everybody on that. Oh, yeah, 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 I meant the voting, sorry. The Water and Wastewater Authority, you are to confirm my appointment of one member to serve on a five-year term on the Water and Wastewater Authority. Upon your confirmation, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Jimmy Comer, please. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Planning Commissioners, you are to confirm my appointment of one member to serve a four-year term on the Planning Commission. Upon your confirmation, I would like to appoint Ms. Commissioner Diane Weathers. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Boza Members, you are to appoint two members to the Boza Board of Zoning Appeals to fill the vacancy due to the passing of Mr. Paul Abercomby, which was a Commissioner for a few years ago, and Mr. Gary Thorne, which has decided to resign from the Board to do other things at this time. You'll also need to appoint two alternates here. I'd like to recommend for your consideration, Mr. Kerry Crockett, to fill out Mr. Paul Abercomby's term, which will expire on July of 2024. I'd like to move Mr. Jerry Dow, which has been a longtime alternate on that Board, to the full-time position there, and finish out Mr. Gary Thorne's position, which will expire 2023. I'd like to recommend to you Ms. Sonia Robinson, and Mr. Brad Little, which is also here in the back tonight, to be appointed as alternates for that Board. That is a very hard Board to be on as well, and we like to have the alternates there just in case it goes long and someone has to leave, or if we don't have somebody there to show up and we have a full slate. So I'm asking to put all of that on for you tonight. I can read that again if I need to. Any comments? Any questions? A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? These people are willing to serve, and we have asked them, and they asked to serve too as well. Judicial Commissioners, at this time, I will turn it over to Commissioner Gentry, and you'll have the floor for two Commissioners.
Okay, we have two part-time judicial Commissioners to approve tonight. I'm going to ask Ms. Lisa Colteroni to come up and speak to that.
Good evening, Commissioners. And first, I'd like to say congratulations to all the newly seated Commissioners, and to all the incumbents who had an opponent in retaining your seat. To the new Commissioners, I am Lisa Colteroni, the Director of the Judicial Commissioners Department here in Wilson County. Judicial Commissioners are appointed by this body. Tonight, I would ask you to consider for appointment to a one-year, part-time position. First, Ms. Anita Fox. Ms. Anita Fox interviewed with our office. She has her Bachelor's of Arts degree in the social sciences field. She's worked in the criminal justice system. Her credentials were presented and endorsed by the Judicial Committee, and I'd like to ask for your vote for her.
Motion to approve.
She is not. She is out of state tonight.
Got a motion to approve Ms. Anita Fox. I hear a second. Any discussion or any questions for Ms. Lisa? Here and none, are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? The record reflected is unanimous. Proceed.
The second candidate that we have for your consideration tonight is a lady by the name of Ms. C. Rae Cooper. Ms. Cooper is a Mount Juliet resident. She has her Bachelor's of Science degree in Criminal Justice Administration. She has worked in the criminal justice field, but she's also a Realtor in Wilson County. Like Ms. Fox, she presented well in her interview, and her credentials were also presented and endorsed by the Judicial Committee. I'd ask for your vote for Ms. C. Rae Cooper for a part-time, one-year appointment to the Judicial Commissioners Office. She is not.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion now? Any questions for Ms. Lisa? Seeing none, you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Let the record reflect it was unanimous. I'm going to get there, Commissioner Kurtz. I'm trying. Thank you, Ms. Lisa. Report of the Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Bernard.
No report.
Emergency Management Director's Report, Director Cooper.
Yes, sir. County Commissioners, familiar faces and new faces, welcome. Hope we can work together on the betterment of Wilson County. In my packet, you have the information there. We are still under the contingency plan, vacancies. Currently, when the packet went out, was 28. Currently, that's six positions. And if you look at the last two pages, that kind of explains the status of those, and the process we went through. We have 16 uncertified, and six certified going through class right now. So that brings our total that we still need to hire is six. Paramedics are somewhat harder to find than EMTs right now. We had three that just finished medics school on people we have now, so that helped. Two is in their first trimester that are on shift now, so they probably got about another six months before they get out. Two of the ones that just finished orientation are in medics school, and two that are supposed to be in the next class are in medics school. So I think it's going to balance out where we're currently short on medics, that the medics will be up to par once that cycle completes. September the 12th, for the new recruits, September the 12th, they started their one-week orientation. They're going to do two weeks of EMR, Emergency Medical Responder, and then 10 weeks of fire recruit. In that, they'll get extrication, hazmat, firefighter safety, and survival, live burns, and then testing. So that's a total of 13 weeks for that to occur. Then in January, they'll start their AEMT hybrid class, and they'll be out of it May of 2023. But to explain, it'll be January before those people will actually be able to ride something we have, which mainly will be the engine and rescue until they get out of EMT school. So they're still going to be working once that occurs. So, and that concludes my report unless there's any questions from anybody.
Got a second question now. Commissioner Chandler.
Director Cooper, I just want to commend you for what you've done to boost up your staff. I know it's been rough for a couple of months, but you and your staff have been very creative, and all the elected body here, and what y'all did to raise the salaries for Director Cooper's staff and the staff all across Wilson County. I think that helped you quite a bit.
Yes, sir.
And I hope we can continue to support you and your efforts so we can get you off this contingency plan, right? And we can get back to normal operation, but thank you.
Commissioner Fields?
Director Cooper, I just want to say, give a shout out to Becky. She came to our church on 9/11 and did an AED and an advanced CPR class. She's great, and I would recommend everybody in here take that from her.
She's a good instructor. Thank you.
Any other questions, Director Cooper? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
Your report.
Thank you, Mayor, County Commissioners. Your report's in your packet. First of all, I'll say welcome to all the new Commissioners. I'm looking forward to working with you, as we, the sheriff's office has always done, and I'm not going to call the rest of you old Commissioners, okay? Like everybody else did, so. No, I didn't say it. Your report's in your packet. Calls for service are up, up this time of year, up 300, 400 calls. Arrests are up on state warrants, civil warrants are up. And to your new Commissioners, I'm going to say something about the jail every time. We're highest daily population 430. For y'all that don't know, there's 460 beds in that facility we're in right now. So I've asked Commissioner Rich to get all the newer Commissioners, or anybody else who wants to come, to get together here in the next couple of weeks, come up and tour the jail, and see what's going on up there, and see the expansion that's going on that's going to help us dramatically, so. About half, three-quarters way down on the page, if you look at that facility's security scan, that's your courtrooms, that's your courthouses, that's the Criminal Justice Center, that's the College Street Building. Them numbers together shows there's a lot of people going in and out of these courthouses. It's getting crowded, more and more crowded every day, so just keep an eye on them numbers, because that's a high number for a month, real high. And that's not counting all the staff that's working in there, because they don't go through it. So there's a lot of people using that court. Next page, your inmate work buses. Listen, them roads are going to be short for the month of August, mainly because of affairs going on. So if anybody needs any roads, or sees any roads that needs to be picked up, I will gladly get them on the list to get them roads picked up. We need to do it before winter time, and it gets too cold to get them out there. That concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
No report.
Director's Report. Director Luttrell is not here. Ms. Jennifer Cothran, which we used to teach together, and Principal Mayfield. Travis Mayfield. Not principal anymore. That shows you I'm dated, sorry. Moved up in the world. Yeah, maybe.
Thanks for having us tonight. Mr. Luttrell had to be out of town for a state meeting, so we get the opportunity, Mr. Mayfield and I get the opportunity, to share with you some great news about our district. Recently, September the 12th, the state released the annual reportings for our schools, and we've got some great news to share with you. You have that in Mr. Luttrell's report, but I'll run through them real quick. We were designated a Level 5 district when we talk about student growth, and that's that movement from year to year in academic achievement for students. Level 5 is the highest level that you can attain. So we were very proud to see that when we looked at our student growth. Also, along with that, we had eight reward schools. Eight reward schools is exceptional for Wilson County. We're very excited. Where we are, reward schools is determined by multiple components: student achievement, student growth, chronic absenteeism, ready graduate components, which is ACT composites, the number of early opportunities for college, for example, AP, dual enrollment, industry certifications when we think about CTE courses. So for those schools, it's a great honor, because it shows that we are producing well-rounded students in our district when they graduate from a school in Wilson County. So we were celebrating eight schools. We have four elementary schools: Gladville Elementary, Rutland Elementary, Springdale Elementary, and WA Ride Elementary. We have one middle school, it's Watertown Middle School, and we have three high schools: Green Hill High School, Mount Juliet High School, and Watertown High School. We had four schools who were around the cusp, who missed it by either one-tenth of a point, or two-tenths of a point, and that is so heartbreaking for those schools, because they were almost there. Those were West Elementary and our Virtual Learning Academy, which we're very proud of that Virtual Learning Academy, and the opportunities that it provides for students to have sort of an alternative setting. We also had Lakeview Elementary and Wilson Central High School, who were just two-tenths of a point away, so they were almost there. But that's our exciting news that we want to share with you, and Mr. Mayfield's going to pick up some more information.
So in the last board meeting, they set the board meeting dates for the remainder of the year, and the work sessions went over the missing asset inventory, which was very good. A budget amendment, what that budget amendment was, we had a person who was doing bookkeeping work at a particular school, who wasn't being paid as a bookkeeper, required no new money, it's just a line item change. Then we've also got some bids coming up for cooling towers at Carroll Oakland and Mount Juliet. Those have been put out and are back. We also have previously the Gladville Elementary, so three big improvements right there. And then the, any board changes, there was three policy changes. The biggest one was homeschool athletics. That change prior was that you had to attend your zone school if you were a homeschool student, all right? This exception is if you are an employee, you can take your child to play athletics at the school in which you work, even though your child's homeschooled. Okay? And that's only an employee change. And the big thing on enrollment, we're up over 700 students from last year, so we're continuing to grow over 20,000 students total. So we continue to experience high growth in Wilson County, which I'm sure you are all aware. And then you can see accomplishments from our career, technical education, and also sports are in full swing and things like that.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Now questions. Commissioner Marlowe.
Did you get the electrical boxes for Stoner Creek?
Two of them came in today. We're hoping to have that open as soon as possible.
Any other questions? Commissioner Fields?
Yes, I don't know if either one of you know the answer to this, but I know each school has at least one AED. Is it a one person responsible for making sure those are operable, because I know the batteries do die? Or is each individual school has a particular person?
Each individual school has someone to check those. We have multiple people trained.
Commissioner Chandler.
Mr. Bayfield, I'm just curious on y'all's teachers, and retention, and vacancies. Do you have a count on how many teachers you're short?
We do not have a current list of how many we are short, because we're recruiting every day. I'll tell us our highest need right now is special education teachers. That's probably where we have the most need right now, our special education teachers. We do know that we are asking our special education teachers to cover multiple classes, so we are, at our last board meeting, Mr. Luttrell brought to the Board, that we would be offering those individuals who are covering additional caseloads and additional stipends, so that we can compensate them until we can fill those positions.
Okay, and just to get that number, I can follow up with your office?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Costley?
Ms. Cothran, I've been getting this question over and over at Mount Juliet High School. The compensation, is it retroactive? That's what they want to know, as far as when they started covering the classes.
For special education teachers, it is retroactive, so it will be paid by semester. So it would be retroactive. So if they've been covering since the beginning of the semester, it would be paid for that one semester.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. Any other questions? Seeing all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Thank you both for being here tonight and delivering the report very well. Report from Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers. Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs.
Ag Center Management met August 29th. Minutes are in your packet, be received and filed.
I hear a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze?
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Glover. Broadband Access, Commissioner Franklin.
No report.
Developing Tourism, Commissioner Brown.
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Dow. Finance, Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith?
No report.
No reports. Insurance?
No report.
Mr. Gentry? Judicial, Commissioner Gentry?
The Judicial Committee met September 8th at 5:00 PM in the upstairs conference room. Your, the minutes are in your packet. I make a motion, we approve them.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland?
No report.
Rules, Commissioner Keith?
No report.
Urban type facility board, Commissioner Scruggs?
Urban type facility board met September tonight. Minutes Randy Paggott, be receiving file.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Finance Director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynard?
Congratulations to those of you who are new here. If I have not met you yet, I look forward to it. I look forward to working with you over the course of the next four years or longer. And to those of you who were elected to new committees tonight, congratulations to you. Look forward to working with you in your new capacities. Finance report's in your packet. I don't have a whole lot to say about that two months through the year. We did incur a lot of additional expenditures in the form of pay plans and additional personnel. So we are, our expenditures, we're about 1.7 million behind where we were this time last year. We've spent more, about 1.7 million more, and with revenue more or less being flat, that's not surprising. You know, remember, we traded property tax pennies for adequate facilities tax. So somewhere between October and February, we'll be able to see how that all plays out for us. The other page in there, your fund balance report, those of you who haven't seen it before, after the adjustments from last month, you're looking at still over a $25 million fund balance, so we can absorb it if we've missed it a little bit. I don't think we have. Last thing you have in your packet, a report on debt obligation. We issued $58,140,000. This was for West Wilson Middle, and so buy some land for some new elementary and middle schools. We got a premium on that issue of $1,817,063.70, so we had total proceeds of $59,957,063.70. The total interest cost, 3.4983. Probably one thing that affected us negatively there was we put a five-year call on that bond because we're going to try to pay this back with FEMA dollars, right? Because this is from damage from the tornado. You had issuance cost on the next page, which I'm required to go through with you. Our financial advisor, Stevens, Inc., $62,500. Bond counsel, Bassberry and Sims, $60,000. $2,500 to our attorney, $700 to US Bank as the paying agent, $34,250 to S&amp;P for ratings. Our rating was reaffirmed at AA+ with a positive outlook. And then the underwriter, $494,190 and other costs of $1639, so total issuance cost of We walk away after issuance cost with $59,301,284.70. And that concludes my report. I just have to read that in the record unless you have any questions for me.
Any question, Mr. Maynard? Take your motion on the report.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Maynard. Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe?
Budget Committee met August 4th, August 8th, and August 9th. All three sets of minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
A motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Marlowe?
Like to say, congratulations first of all to all the new members. I should have done that a while ago, being the old member, the old man on the court. But being the oldest one on the county court doesn't offer good things all the time. I got my packet in the mail, and there was 100 pages missing. I don't know what Sandra was thinking about, but, no. Yeah, anyway, congratulations and welcome. Resolution 22-9-2.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Yes.
Hang on one second. Mike, I know we got bonds for Circuit Court. Sheriff Bryan?
We've got a couple that were in the packet. We've got four more, I think, that came in after. These are things that we don't approve. We may want to suspend the rules. Then add all the bonds, make a motion to do all the bond resolutions at one time. And then second on that, get a vote, and then vote on all of them.
Can we vote, by voice vote on those or they must be roll call?
No, you do a voice vote on those.
Okay.
The motion's in the room.
Second.
Nothing we can do about that. They need to be approved. Elected officials have so long to get their bonds approved.
What I see right now, we've got a motion to go out of session. Do I hear a second, her a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So now, can I lead it from here?
Yeah, I will. And we got two and three that were in the packet. Two, three, and four.
Two, three, four.
Five.
Five. Six. Okay. And then there is one that I just found, that I failed to put a number on. So it would actually be number 18, because it was in the packet.
Who's is it?
Jenny Falk.
He was in, he'd been.
It's in the packet, no number.
It was in the packet with no number.
It wasn't in the packet. It came in the day after we did the audit.
It was in the packet.
It was in the packet. Number 15, 16, and 17, which was laying on everyone's desk tonight, is the ones that came in after the packet went out.
Can I do them all at one time without any of them in the packet?
What is Jenny, what is Jenny Falk? What is her number?
18.
Okay, the one that's not numbered, is it? Then you can make, somebody can make a motion to consider all of them at one time.
Tell us which one they all are first.
I should vote on that.
Do we have to say their names?
I won't.
Might not be a bad idea.
Got a question before we do that. Can we go ahead and add Bobby Franklin on for this one?
We get his bond. But he's got to. We'll see him in our time. He's legal.
So let me see if I can make a stab at this right quick. What I'd like to see a motion on would be the following: to accept the bonds for Circuit Court Clerk Debbie Moss, for Sheriff Robert Bryan, road zone commissioner for Chad Bernard, Constable, two, zone two, cheat, cheat's wrong, Constable Frank Gutzman, Constable Jenny Lynn Falk, accept the bond trustee Jim Major, and then I have one for.
Jeff Joines. Joines.
Jeff Joines, and what was the other one?
Jacob Austin.
And Jacob Austin. I'd like for you to have a motion for all of those. If somebody could make that for me? I got a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? For our new people, sometimes these things happen when we have something like bonds that have to be done, so it's not normally this chaotic. Does that covers, Mayor?
It doesn't. You have to vote now, right? I think technically we had, the motion was to pull them together to vote on the new vote.
So we voted to pull them all together, and I got a motion and a pass on that. Now I get a motion to approve all the bonds.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're ready to move forward now.
Move to go back in session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are back in session. And we're ready for 22-9-6, I think.
I think.
Yes, sir.
All right. 22-9-6, to establish a sanitary sewer access reserve fund within the general fund.
Do I hear a motion? And a second. Since there's no money involved here, I think I can do voice votes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Let the record reflect it was unanimous. Please.
Resolution 22-9-7, to accept an additional $9 million for state fair funding into Fund 171, and to approve expenditures of these funds.
And on this resolution, I'll need an amendment on this one once we get it on the floor. It is backwards on number 10. It's actually the Wilson County Promotions to repay the Ag Learning Center, correct, Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones brought that to my attention earlier. I got a motion for, get a motion to get it on the floor?
Second.
And a second. All right, now the amendment, to be amended as Commissioner Glover made the motion on that one, and second by Commissioner Keith. All in favor, say aye on the amendment.
Aye.
Okay. Now, are you ready to vote on the $9 million? Just so we'll be clear on this, the $9 million comes through the county, must be accepted into our budget. It won't be a line item budget, just like you won't see the budget in there about the jail distribution. It sets in its own account. The document here tells you where the money is being spent at. We actually met this week and will continue to meet to make sure that those items that are on the list are met and that we do not overspend, but this is really pass-through money. This is the $9 million, which was the second payment from the state. We actually had a $5 million one earlier last year, and we have been through that. Any questions about that, Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, can you go over the amendment to, you say number 10?
Yes, sir. The amendment on number 10, Commissioner Jones said, it says the Ag Learning Center to repay Wilson County Promotions previously approved $1 million. If you remember, on the first $5 million that was given to us, we had in there that 3.5 million was going to the Tennessee maid building, a million was going to the Ag Learning Center, 200,000 to the restroom, and 300,000 to cattle panels. The Ag Learning Center was not in the promotion to be built at that particular time, so they wanted to borrow the million out of that $5 million, put it toward the Tennessee maid building because it was in the progress, and then promised to give them a million back out of this next $9 million that we got. And so that's why that should be Wilson County Promotions granting back the Ag Learning Center their million, not the other way around. Does that make sense?
Okay, so you just reversed that.
Yes, sir. That's what he, yes.
I just want to make sure I got it.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Any other questions on that? Are we ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
Please cast your vote.
Sometimes they don't do it.
Mr. Hopps? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25-0, resolution passes. Continue? Sir?
25, yes.
25-0, resolution passes is what I said, sorry. No problem.
25-0. Resolution 22-9-8, to amend the budget appropriation resolution, to make an appropriation from the general fund, ARP money to broadband projects in the county into fund improvements at the Wilson County Health Department.
Motion approved. Second.
Any discussion? Just adding to this one right quick, you're actually investing 2.4 million out of the ARP funds that was designated for that. In return, you're going to get about, you're going to get 10-plus million dollars of investment in broadband in the county. It's a great deal in my opinion. Commissioner Hall?
Just one question. On these funds, these do not have to go back to anybody else besides us for the approval, correct? Once we approve it, it's a done deal?
Once you approve it tonight, then we make an agreement. Me and Mr. Maynard will work out that agreement with the, both DTC and United Communications. It'll be spent and get reimbursed is what it will be. And then we'll have to just take these receipts and make sure that we can justify that if it's ever called upon. Good question. Anybody else? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25, yes, zero, no, resolution passes.
Resolution 22-9-9, to amend the budget appropriation resolution, to make an appropriation from Veterans Reserve account to Veteran Services.
No move.
A motion, second. Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 22-9-10, to amend the budget appropriation resolution, to make an additional appropriation from Stormwater Reserve Fund into storm water and line item transfers.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 22-9-11, to amend the budget appropriation resolution, to make an additional appropriations from County Clerk data fees into County Clerk.
I hear a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a second. I got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 22-9-12, to amend the budget appropriation resolution, to make an additional appropriation from data processing fees reserved into Circuit Court.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second now. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Weathers?
Excuse me.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 22-9-13, to amend the budget appropriation resolution, to make an appropriation